Thank you.
Karen.
I believe councillor Brim is still on holiday.
Thank you.
We then come on to 6622, which is the presentation of past Mayor's Medal. And it gives me great delight to be able to present to councillor Brindle his past Mayor's Medal.
You stay there, Mike.
Stay there.
I risk assessed it.
I'm after the £50,000 for this week.
It's only £250 on you, Brim, sorry.
Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute, we've got to see photo opportunity. Everybody diving for cover. So on to item 6722, which is the minutes. To confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held on the 26th of April and mayor making meeting held 6th of May, accepting those items to be dealt with under the exclusion of press and public. We've had these previously.
No, no, I was just, I was just, I was listening.
Okay. Not used to you having me hanging on my every word. So we'll go to the minutes of the meeting on the 26th of April. Obviously, page one, page two, page three. Any comments, concerns or questions or queries, please? Are we happy to sign those as true and fair reflection? Yes. Thank you. And then on to the minutes of mayor making. We have page one, page two, and then all the appendices. Are we happy with those, please? Thank you. We then move on to agenda item 6822, which is the committee minutes. So the first one up is the amenities committee held on the 4th of May. I believe that's you councillor Gerry.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to present the minutes from amenities held on Wednesday, the 4th of May. That was an extra meeting in the calendar. So thank you to those councillors and officers and members of the public that attended. There is one recommendation, which is that the council approves the committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings for the forthcoming year. And that's within the pack next to the minutes. Therefore, I would like to move that recommendation.
All those in favour, please? Thank you. Move the minutes? We then move on to the personnel committee held on the 10th of May. Councillor Cannon, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the 10th of May. They are all resolved items. Any questions, please?
Have to move the minutes, council? We then move on to the planning committee meeting held Tuesday, the 10th of May. That was a busy day. Councillor Wright, please.
Madam Mayor, I present the minutes of the planning meeting of the 10th of May. There are four resolved matters. Page one, page two.
Agreed? We then come on to the meeting of the venues and committees committee on Wednesday, the 11th of May. And councillor Wright again, I'm afraid.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I present the minutes of the menus and communications committee of the 11th of May. Again, they're all resolved matters. Pages one and two. Move the minutes.
We agreed on that, please, council? Thank you. And then we come to the finance committee held 24th of the fifth. And that's myself. I beg leave to present the unconfirmed minutes of the meeting held 24th of May. Whilst there are three recommendations on there, the third one is actually going to be dealt with under this meeting's agenda item 7422. So I'll take the two recommendations in order. The first one is that the council approves the committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings for the forthcoming mayoral year. Are we happy with that, please? Any objections? And then the second one is that the council approve the making of the payments and attachments A to E in the supporting papers that were distributed with the agenda. Are we all happy with those, please? Super, thank you. Move the minutes? Thank you. So we then move on to 6922, which is, hey, crikey. Yes, so thank you all for your support and I know many of you are supportive during the mayor making ceremony. And then we've obviously had the civic reception and the civic service and have received many compliments about the support from the staff, the service and the team involved in that. So yes, my thanks to all of you for helping make that happen. I've had just two mayoral engagements this year. The first one was the Thetford Town Boxing Club home show, which was their first one for a good couple of years. And it was absolutely fantastic to be there. And I have to say their young people are an absolute credit to the organisation. And I know Charlie and Matty Dean put in an awful lot of their time making sure that that runs as well as it can. That was a joy to attend. And then this morning, as many as my fellow councillors also attended, was the official opening of Elm House here in Thetford, the temporary housing solution that's been provided by Breckland Council. And it was a privilege to speak to some of the residents that were there and hear their journey and their challenges, but also their enthusiastic support for both access, the community trust and Breckland and how they have supported them. So it's going to get busier because my diary's filling up. We'll now move on to item 7022, which is town council representatives on other bodies to receive and note any reports. So if there are any town councils that are on our outside bodies, if you could indicate that you'd like to speak. Councillor Tullit.
There's a staff meeting on the 11th of May.
Please Karen.
Councillor Parker.
Okay, I believe councillor Bream is still on holiday. Thank you. We then come on to sixty six twenty two, which is the presentation of past Mayor's Medal. And it gives me great delight to be able to present to councillor Brindle his past Mayor's Medal. You stay there Mike.
Stay there.
Yeah, stay there. I risk assessed it.
I'm after the fifty thousand quid for a street.
It's only two hundred and fifty pounds on you, Bream, sorry. Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute, we've got to see photo opportunity. Everybody diving for cover. Tom doesn't. So, so on to item sixty seven twenty two, which is the minutes. To confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held on the twenty sixth of April and mayor making meeting held sixth of May, accepting those items to be dealt with under the exclusion of press and public. We've had these previously. No, no, I was just, I was, I was just, I was listening. Okay. Not used to you having me hanging on my every word. So we'll go to the minutes of the meeting on the twenty sixth of April. Obviously, page one, page two, page three. Any comments, concerns or questions or queries, please? Are we happy to sign those as true and fair reflection? Yes. Thank you. And then on to the minutes of mayor making. We have page one, page two, and then all the appendices. Are we happy with those, please?
Three.
Thank you. We then move on to agenda item sixty eight twenty two, which is the committee minutes. So the first one up is the amenities committee held on the fourth of May. I believe that's you councillor Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to present the minutes from amenities held on Wednesday, the fourth of May. That was an extra meeting in the calendar. So thank you to those councillors and officers and members of the public that attended. There is one recommendation, which is that the council approves the committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings for the forthcoming year. And that's within the pack next to the minutes. Therefore, I would like to move that recommendation.
All those in favour, please? Thank you. Move the minutes? We then move on to the personnel committee held on the tenth of May. Councillor Cannon, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the tenth of May. They are all resolved items. Any questions, please? Move the minutes, please.
Have to move the minutes, council? Thank you. We then move on to the planning committee meeting held Tuesday, the tenth of May. That was a busy day. Councillor Wright, please.
Madam Mayor, present the minutes of the planning meeting of the tenth of May. There are four resolved matters, page one, page two.
Agreed? Thank you. We then come on to the meeting of the venues and committees committee on Wednesday, the eleventh of May. And councillor Wright again, I'm afraid.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I present the minutes of the venues and communications committee of the eleventh of May. Again, they're all resolved matters, pages one and two. Move the minutes.
We agreed on that, please, council? Thank you. And then we come to the finance committee held twenty fourth of the fifth. And that's myself. I beg leave to present the unconfirmed minutes of the meeting held twenty fourth of May. Whilst there are three recommendations on there, the third one is actually going to be dealt with under this meeting's agenda item seventy four twenty two. So I'll take the two recommendations in order. The first one is that the council approves the committee structure, terms of reference and calendar of meetings for the forthcoming mayoral year. Are we happy with that, please? Any objections? And then the second one is that the council approve the making of the payments and attachments A to E in the supporting papers that were distributed with the agenda. Are we all happy with those, please? Super, thank you. Move the minutes? Thank you. So we then move on to sixty nine twenty two, which is, hey, crikey. Yes, so thank you all for your support and I know many of you are supportive during the mayor making ceremony. And then we've obviously had the civic reception and the civic service and have received many compliments about the support from the staff, the service and the team involved in that. So yes, my thanks to all of you for helping make that happen. I've had just two mayoral engagements this year. The first one was the Thetford Town Boxing Club home show, which was their first one for a good couple of years and it was absolutely fantastic to be there. And I have to say their young people are an absolute credit to them, to, to the organisation. And I know Charlie and Matty Dean put in an awful lot of their time making sure that that runs as well as it can. That was a joy to attend. And then this morning, as many as my fellow councillors also attended, was the official opening of Elm House here in Thetford, the temporary housing solution that's been provided by Breckland Council. And it was a privilege to speak to some of the residents that were there and, and hear, you know, their journey and their challenges, but also their enthusiastic support for both Access, the Community Trust and Breckland and how they have supported them. So it's going to get busier because my diary's filling up. We'll now move on to item seventy twenty two, which is town council representatives on other bodies to receive and note any reports. So if there are any town councillors that are on our outside bodies, if you could indicate that you'd like to speak, councillor Taylor.
There's a stag meeting on the eleventh of May. So looking at the speed along Carlswall Lane and they've had a walk around the area and discussing various options. And the police report says that there's been one CBO arrested for breach of conditions in central court. There was a major traffic operation on the Forest Retail Park, which resulted in seventy five vehicles being seized or fined for various offences. And there was a drug want resulting in one arrest in first week of May. There's been an increase in trolleys being dumped into the river, mainly Sainsbury's trolleys and that McDonald, we were talking to Sangers about how they can look at resolving that. So apart from that, and stag project number two, which they've been working on for quite a while, is the thirty for Thetford. And it's good news that that has been achieved with one minor amendment. And I'd like to thank Stag for their continual perseverance and determination, continually pushing for the results, far worse than the long wait. The next meeting is on the eighth of June and thirteenth of July and the open meeting is on the seventh of July. There won't be any in August.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Hodgson.
Can I ask your permission to say something about the U3A? There's not really a council representative on that, but they do want to give a message to the council.
I think that would be most appropriate considering that they presented at the annual town meeting.
Well, it follows on from that. And Lesley, as you know, presented at a town meeting and she gave an invitation to councillors to come to the next meeting on Thursday. But unfortunately, that clashed with a working party, so not many councillors had an opportunity to go. And so I'd been asked to extend an invitation to councillors to come to any of our Thursday meetings, which are the fourth Thursday of each month, one forty five, two o'clock in Carnegie. And we're very happy tenants in Carnegie, it's very well. Thank you, we'd be happy to see you there.
Thank you councillor Hodgson. Councillor Berto.
Thank you, Madam. So I attended my first meeting for the Tesco Music Project, as many of you represented recently. It was very interesting, I quite rather enjoyed it, because it was a very jolly happy group and they do a lot of work with the children and, you know, incentivise them to do aggressive music and actually activities positive, keep them entertained. The group is doing fairly well, but as you know, funds are scarce, so they're looking for new ideas and anybody that wants, anybody that wants to volunteer or to create new ideas for fundraising for them or to donate, they're much welcomed. And one thing of relevance for this term basically is that they have a summer residential for youngsters from nine to seventeen years old. They have daily activities as well throughout the summer, but there's this summer residential where the children get to go away for three days to a location and try musical instruments and do outdoor activities and all sorts of things that are good for them. There is a fee and a cost, but because they are a community group and if these children would like to attend, but they don't have the means or the parents can't afford, they please do contact the Tesco Music Project because they will consider on, on a case basis to allow children at a reduced rate or even for free if they see that that situation and the child is generally interested in would benefit from the residential. So for now, that's it, I look forward to the next meeting reportedly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Berto. Councillor Taylor, you indicated to speak.
Recently, I had a meeting with a body of, a very strange body on a subject. And I just thought I'd hand these off because these magazines actually cover what the subject was, which you can prove at your own time. Politicians can't profess on that moment to tell the truth, but I had a meeting with the CPS, the Crown Prosecution Service, where the truth was told about in detail. And those of you who might be glad to know, maybe some of you won't, but the charges that were fraudily brought against me.
Is this relevant to an outside body?
Which were brought against me.
Councillor Taylor, is this relevant to an outside body, please? The fact that you're not answering means to say it's not. Please sit down.
So the charges were.
Please sit down.
I do look forward to, forward apology from councillor Jeremy already.
Please sit down.
We left them to you via email, not based on.
Are there any other councillors that would like to speak regarding their work on outside bodies? Good night, councillor Taylor. I have no use for firelighters.
Maybe he thinks you've read it already.
Fellow councillors, is there anybody else that would like to report back on their roles on outside bodies, please? In that case, we will move on to agenda item seventy one twenty two, which is disappointing because there's always normally a good question and answer session on this one. So it's reports from county and district councillors to receive and note any reports. Terry, may I start with you? So councillor Jeremy.
I'm trying so hard to be. Just a couple of things to update on this, and I was pleased to be able to circulate the report by email this afternoon. But suddenly just occurred to me that it was probably best to arrange for some printed copies for the public because I'm downside of not having some of my own. So I'll try to remember to do that next time, I've no idea what I'm talking about. There's a couple of bits just to report on, so I'll mainly focus on a meeting I had today with Jack Griffiths, who was the Norfolk County Council highways engineer for Thetford. And I had quite a big list for him of highways related casework. And some of them have been outstanding for a long while, some of them more recently. I think probably quite a few councillors will be aware that both the town bridge and nuns bridges have both been struck by vehicles within probably the last couple of months and have been damaged. They have been inspected and they are safe. The work will be done, but it won't be straight away. So they've inspected it, they're aware of it, they deem it to be safe and it's on a sort of three to six month timescale for repair. But I was pleased that they do acknowledge that there's an issue with both and they've been out to have a look at them, so I was pleased about that. And more positively, the Blaven Bridge pathway, which this council is part funding, work will commence on that from Monday, the fifteenth of August. And that will take up to five weeks. They've made arrangements with Breckland Council to use the car park at the bottom of Water Lane near the priory and they've also spoken to the heritage and just reassured them what they're doing. I did encourage them this morning, when I, when I met with them, to also be able to affect the park run, because obviously that's where they gather and that's where they do the scanning and the barcodes. And so they'll need to make other arrangements for those five weeks, move along a little bit. And they've taken it away to make that contract, so I was pleased that they've agreed to do that. The, one of the things I've been working on is bus shelters. And I was talking to some residents recently who highlighted how they want to be able to use the local bus, particularly with taxi prices increasing. And they can physically walk to the bus stop, but when they get there, because we don't actually have any bus shelters in Thetford, there's only one on Station Road, they've really struggled to use public transport because frankly, by the time they get to the bus, bus stop, they want to be able to sit down. So Jack's going to go away and cost up some sort of bus shelter options, perhaps from local member budget, perhaps from parish partnership, perhaps through Norfolk County Council's sustainable transport budgets, because obviously we're encouraging people to walk and cycle and use public transport. And I do think that is a barrier to people using the bus in Thetford. And so if people are aware of any particular bus stops that are well used, sort of seeing people congregating, actually a bus shelter might be appropriate. And do feed that back, because we certainly won't be able to do every bus stop in Thetford. But if we get some of the more well-used ones covered off, that would be really encouraging. I drive around other towns and villages and I saw these bus shelters and I think we took that any at all really in Thetford. And it just struck me when I was talking to this lady that she had a point. The Barbara mentioned about the thirty for Thetford campaign, which I'm really pleased about. I'm told it's imminent that the forty signs will be coming down and the thirty signs will be going up. I've encouraged them again today to do some publicity around that. Half the benefit is actually encouraging people and making them aware that this speed has changed and reduced. So I think they'll take that away. What I was particularly pleased about is we as a town council purchased some years ago what they call SAM twos, the portable flashing speed signs. What Norfolk have now agreed to do is that as part of the thirty for Thetford campaign, they will be funding a number of posts to go up in locations where the SAM twos can be erected. This is boots and I think you know what I'm saying. I was expecting to pay for it out of my local member budget, but they've agreed to do that, which is really encouraging. And they've also now got permission from Norfolk to be a bit more flexible on the posts which these things can be erected on to. It was a really stupid criteria frankly, that meant there was about one location in Thetford where it could go. Apparently that's been challenged and rode back on and actually there's more locations now. So that's why as part of this, there will be some locations. What they don't have is the capacity to put the SAM two up. It has to go up and down in a three week window. It's not a permanent structure, it has to come down. And so I'm really hoping at some point we can have a conversation as a town council about our staff incorporating part of that into their duties. Apparently it's very simple, you can put it up, take it down after three weeks. It doesn't immediately have to go back up somewhere. But we now have the ability to use the SAM two. When I spoke to Norfolk today, I encouraged them to look at Croxton Road further up from where the existing flashing speed sign is. Very good at slowing people down as soon as they come on to Croxton Road and in the sports centre, but further up the road where the academy is actually, you know, every so often having a reminder would be useful. And also London Road, because the road up to Sainsbury's now is very busy, there's so many more retail options there now, particularly with being there. I see so many more people walking up and down the street. At the moment, it's forty, it's going to be down to thirty. Let's put some temporary signs up to remind people that it has now gone down to thirty. So they're my two suggestions. If you do have any more, do let me know and I will try to incorporate women. But actually, I was very pleased with the response to both Blaven Bridge today and also those of you.
Yes, councillor Hodgson, please.
Councillor Jeremy, I nearly called you Terry, sorry. Just a couple of questions about town bridge. I'm not aware of what the damage is, but I do know of some long-term damage on the railings where there's corrosion and where the two bits join. So I just wondered if that was going to be dealt with at the same time as the other damage. So I just wondered if you could mention that.
Yeah.
And, and also are the bus shelters and the idea of people sitting down in bus shelters? I'm not sure if you've tried sitting on the ones in the bus station. So I just wondered if we could perhaps get some bus shelters that actually have some sort of seat rather than a ledge that a lot of people can't, I mean, I'm okay, but a lot of people can't actually climb up onto them. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Thanks.
Councillor Cannon, did you indicate to? Apologies. Anybody else would like to ask a question?
Just, I'm just wondering if we could look to Sainsbury's or something like that, because there was a bus shelter up there once, it got damaged and it was taken away. But it's potentially Sainsbury's might be out of park finance. As you say, that area of town is now getting more and more traffic, but yeah.
Councillor Cannon. See, I knew you wanted to.
Yeah, what I would say, when it comes to buses, because some of the councillors do use the buses, and I think if we just had at least one shelter on every estate, so that if you know you're going to go to town and it's raining, you can head just for that one. The Ladies Estate, you know, if there was one up near the Ladies Estate, the three estates could actually come down and sort of like gather under there, because it is in bad weather. The bus station down there is okay, but it's gale force winds in the wintertime, you know. I don't know, whoever dreamed their bus shelter was up, but they don't do nothing, you just stand under them soaked because the rain just comes in. So it's just a thought, it's about having one on every estate, I think, if possible.
Councillor Jeremy, if I may, I've seen some recent publicity regarding green roofs on bus shelters and I think that would be really exciting if we can get those incorporated as well. So yeah, just opening up our nature corridors.
There's some funding for that as well, B stops.
Yes, that was it, that's right.
Yep, there is funding available as well.
Okay.
Noted.
Positive solutions. Councillor Brindle, is there anything you'd like to report in your capacities district? Councillor Harvey?
I've got a couple. Regarding the Elm House, you know, today was really cause I'm proud to go and see that. I'd like to give credit to councillor Jeremy for all the hard work he did at the beginning in getting with the residents and getting the local people involved in making this this went ahead. But secondly, I'd like to give thanks to Breckland of Staff for helping me with the early intervention fund. This is a really good fund and residents can put input and struggling. To get through it was like running through treacle. You know, I mean, I'm not ITs, maybe it was this and that, and it was to get through. But there was two members of staff at Breckland themselves who helped me at no end. And so if any people are listening and want to help, the early intervention fund is there, and just get in touch with the local councillors and Cherry will help you through.
Nicely delegated. Thank you councillor Harvey. Are there any questions on councillor Harvey's comments at all? Yes, councillor Berto.
Quick question, I mean, I, I suppose that was Breckland sending invites for the opening of the Elm House. So my question is, why did some councillors get invites and others didn't? I can speak for myself particularly because I am a ward councillor. I live literally half a dozen metres from, from the Elm House, basically almost from neighbours. And I was one of the ones that pushed and spoke to people in the beginning to incentivise the building to be good to use, whatever they use maybe in early stages when there was just a bunch of rubble and falling apart. So I actually think it's a bit distasteful that they were quite selective in the way they invited people over for the opening, not about the ceremony, but to let people know what, what the building ended up like and what's basically, thank you.
In response to that, I would say that there's been an awful lot of press coverage regarding how it's ended up and the journey that it's taken in relation to the invitations. My understanding is it was Breckland Ward councillors that were invited. I initially received an invite as a Breckland Ward councillor and then was asked to attend in my capacity as mayor representing this council. Okay. Councillor Dowling, is there anything you'd like to feedback on this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just, I'd like to reiterate what councillor said, yes, about Elm House. It was wonderful to go there today and to talk to everyone who's worked so hard to get it going. And I suggested that maybe they should set up like a friends scheme so that people could sponsor various things that they want, they want to get lots of new equipment and probably other things in the future. So maybe that's something we could have a look at. And also in my role as Breckland councillor, I'd received two reports from people about vendors, parking in various areas. One was on Malford Commune, I see that was dealt with very swiftly. And the other one was near Francis Funeral Direct, there's parking there and it was blocking lots of the residents. And I understand that's been, has gone now as well. So that was, you know, thank you to everyone who was involved with that. So the residents were pleased.
I mean, in relation to one of the particular vendors, they do have a street trading licence, but part of that requirement is actually to have landowners' permission. And, and sometimes that hasn't always been given. So yes, thank you for supporting our team at Breckland on that one. Are there any questions, queries or comments on that at all, please? I suppose no to feedback, sorry. I suppose the biggest thing that I've just recently signed off in my capacity as Norfolk County councillor, councillor Jeremy referred to it earlier regarding the members highways budget. I'm pleased to say that I signed off literally today. We're going to be putting in a drop curb just, and it's interesting that you met, members of the public mentioned about access around the Guildhall Street area. So we're looking at putting a drop curb in opposite Roy's there, outside the front of Scots opticians and Metcalf Coop and Pettifer's solicitors. Because whilst you can go that way, you can't actually come this way without ending up walking down the road quite a considerable distance. And frankly, it's dangerous, not just for, you know, people with mobility issues, but also, you know, parents with push chairs and that kind of thing. So I'm delighted that we'll be putting that in as part of that scheme. So any questions for me on that? In that case, we will move on to agenda item seventy two twenty two, which is a request from Thetford Golf Club to the council for support for a traffic regulation order. Obviously, our member of the public kindly came along and it was, I think it was really good that actually they felt they could come to us. Thank you. They felt they could come to us, share their concerns and obviously yourselves have all received the paper. Unfortunately, the golf club itself does not fall within the parish of Thetford, but we are their closest neighbours and Norfolk County Council directed them to ask for input. Obviously, the golf club has shared the information, is that up on the screen? Oh, fantastic, thank you. There is quite a specific response there from Norfolk County Council most recently that says the speed limit change request has been put on to a list for consideration under the Road Safety Community Fund, which the south of Norfolk, including Breckland, is being considered for traffic regulation schemes such as this to be considered in the financial year twenty twenty three, twenty four. It will be assessed with other sites for suggestions and considered if the speed, change in speed limit at this location is a viable option or not. Obviously, officers cannot guarantee that the speed limit change will go ahead, but it's been part, it's been assessed as part of this forward plan of work. So today, council, we ask you to consider the information that's been provided and obviously the anecdotal evidence provided to us from the golf club today and decide what support you would like to offer. I'll open it to the floor, please. Councillor Brindle.
I think one of the issues that shouldn't be allowed to slip by is the fact that Thetford Golf Club was required to remove its, the location of somebody's home at the time when the A eleven was, was built. And they weren't given a choice in that, effectively they had to do it. So the difficulty that they now find themselves in was not of their So the difficulty that they now find themselves in was not of their making. It really wasn't. And I think that should give us some sympathy towards this request. Particularly, as I imagine it's right to say, it would be a continuation of the thirty mile an hour limit that we have now been reported this evening has effectively will, is about to take place. So it's not, it's not, it's not a new limit, it's an extension of my own limit, if that makes a difference. So I hope that those two features could enable us to decide that we support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brindle. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter, please? Councillor Jeremy.
Thank you, madam. Just a couple of points. Relatively recently, Norfolk County Council changed its approach to the road safety fund. Historically, it was always done on a Norfolk wide basis, based on the level of risk. What the new system is, is it's prioritised on a geographical basis. So I can't remember which one's the first one, but say West Norfolk in one year and they're dealing with all the road safety projects during that year in West Norfolk. And you can see from up there that South Norfolk, which comes under, is being tackled in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And I think that's really unfortunate because actually what it could mean is that projects with a lower risk in, say, West Norfolk could get tackled before projects with a higher risk in, say, Thetford. And I think that geographical split is unfortunate because actually it should be done on the basis of need and risk across the whole of the county. So I just wanted to clarify why that that statement is up there because and so it'll be considered in that year. And we know from other projects like this is it will then take a while to come to fruition. So I think that's unfortunate. So I just wanted to make that point. Although obviously I would support the reduction in speed. You know, it's not necessary to go hurtling along there and wheel drive it. I've seen people crossing the road. I would suggest that when we respond as a council, we ask the golf club for information as to their membership, because actually I was, even though it's kind of Suffolk, kind of Norfolk, I would imagine the vast majority of their members are from Thetford or certainly Norfolk, more often than not, in that area. And really make that point that actually it's Norfolk residents that are at risk. And I don't care if they're just over the border playing golf. Actually, they are Norfolk residents and that should be factored into that. And the only other point I'd make is if you were going at sixty along there or forty, if you were here at forty, actually there would still be significant damage and you may well still die in front of it. One of the biggest challenges along there is visibility. It's so overgrown on parts of that road. I'm not sure if that is council responsibility on the verge. Normally, you know, to a certain extent, the highway you decide is council responsibility and then it will become golf club responsibility. The visibility on that whole stretch, very often people will appear into the road before you've even seen them, particularly in the summer when it's particularly overgrown. So I think we should be reiterating that tackling some of the foliage along there is actually really important, particularly where there are recognised crossing points. There are, you know, specific places to cross. And I would consider myself to be a careful driver, but I've, you know, seen people sort of leering out to cross and it crikey, you know, it's very easy to, to nearly hit them. So I totally support us doing what we need to do to get, you know, this moving. And there's a couple of other things actually a bit more practical in the meantime.
Thank you, councillor Jeremy. I'll take councillor Tullit and then councillor Wright, please.
I'd like to support the reduction in speed. It's not the best of roads. It's very dippy and the surface is poor. I travel along there quite a few times a week and even though I keep my speed down, I don't give a speed limit. You are from pressurised by other drivers that wants to do the full amount. So if the speed limit comes down, at least you feel confident that you are sticking to the speed limit and other drivers will just have to wait behind you.
Councillor Wright, please.
My clarification, thank you, madam mayor, is that it is in Norfolk, is part of Thetford Parish because the county boundary has moved out to where we see it today on the dip. Eighteen eighties, when the boundary was put out, it used to be Mary's Parish, which was then amalgamated into that. So it is an awful parish. We can wholeheartedly say it's an awful problem. So that's fine. The, the issues on membership, yeah, they are quite, well, I think the movements across the road be useful to, to add to our argument as well because they do get a lot, not just members, but also visiting groups there as well. And it's understand from them, they're trying to improve the course and make it more desirable place and pushing up the rankings, which means more and more people will be coming there. The visibility issue, I understand. I'm just wondering if there's a possibility of some little rumble strips as you approach that crossing as part of it in the intermediate time. The gentleman from the golf club did ask for a forty limit. Obviously councillor Brindle alluded to a thirty extension. And it's something that we probably just need to put our cards on the table and ask, what do we want? With regard to.
Thank you, councillor Wright. I'll take councillor Cannon and councillor Harvey, please.
Yeah, although it isn't about the golf course, it's about High Lodge and children do use that road to go down to get to High Lodge, you know, and they will, they will go through the forest and then cross over near the golf house because they, somehow they nip around the back of the golf course. I don't know how they do it, I swear. But no, they do do that. But you see, what, what, when it's doing forty, you're, I just think we need to say it's not just about the golf course using it, it's about people using it. Because, you know, not a lot of parents have got cars. They might walk to High Lodge. So they've got to use that road. So it's better if it's thirty than forty or fifty or sixty.
Thank you, councillor Cannon. Councillor Harvey, please.
I don't know if this is practical, but Harvey, you know, to talk or work with the golf club so they can help finance and sign. Because they're not for.
I think in terms of, if I remember rightly from the conversations that we've had for thirty for Thetford, ultimately, the signage is a very small part of it because there will need to be an application, a legal application to reduce the speed limit. Am I correct, councillor Jeremy? So it's actually the legal aspect that's the key element. The signs are fairly minimal.
Is there any legal reason why the golf club can't put up signs along the road? Be careful, I know it's like Terry's saying about the vision, and that be careful, you know, people crossing the roads, et cetera, et cetera, like we have at the football and cricket club.
There is already red triangle signs highlighting that there's crossings and warnings in between that main piece that they cross, that they, those are already there. But I think, I think they feel that the speed limit change would be more appropriate to reduce risk. Councillor Hushkinson, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, very happy to support a reduction in speed there. I'm not sure whether thirty would be too slow and I think there's probably some regulations that we're probably going to have to abide with. But we could, we could ask a thirty and see what we get. But I was also very pleased to see in the paperwork that came from the golf course that they had actually done some work on the verges there and improved the visibility. So they are doing a bit and they're trying to make it as safe as possible. And that's, that'd be congratulated to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Well done. Yes, councillor Dowling.
I'd just like to say that as someone who goes up to the golf club quite a lot, have to drop my husband off. It, it's nightmare coming out of that. It's not so bad going in, but there's a sort of dip in the road and cars can come along there quite fast. And, you know, for someone crossing, as I think one of the gentlemen in the golf club said with a trolley or something, it really must be quite scary. So we'd definitely support whatever we can do to help.
Would anybody else like to comment on this matter? So from your conversations, I'm getting the gist that we are in support of supporting their application. I would like to propose that we will write to them, write to Norfolk County Council, supporting a speed reduction and outlining some of the instances that yourselves have highlighted here in discussions and also taking some of the facts and figures that we were presented with from the golf course as well. Do I have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Cannon. All those in favour? Thank you. Councillor Cannon.
You propose all. I propose. Excuse me, it's been a long day.
So we move on to agenda item seventy-three twenty-two, which is the election of a new town council representative to the Greater Thetford Partnership Board. And I'd like to receive nominations for someone to be the council's representative on the GTP, please. Councillor Jeremy.
Thank you, madam mayor. And I think it's really important that, given the growth of Thetford, it's happening largely at the other end of woodlands and animal days. So that somebody that represents up there is attending the board meetings. And I go, and I'm from Borough Ward, you go as Castle Ward. So therefore, I'd like to propose councillor Dave Hodgkinson.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Harvey. Are there any other nominations to serve on the board, please? All those in favour of councillor Hodgkinson serving on the board? That's unanimous. Thank you all very much.
You look thrilled.
I did note for myself as well.
Just to make sure. You will read what you say. So we move on to seventy-four twenty-two, which is the approval of the annual governance statement, hereafter known as the AGS. And it, we're required to consider the assessment undertaken by the Finance Committee on each assertion in the AGS and you've had the annual governance statement provided to you and a covering note. And therefore we require you to approve the AGS, which is part of the council's annual governance and accountability return, otherwise known as AIGAR, it's not doing a bad pirate impression, for the financial year ending the thirty-first of March, twenty twenty-two. What I would highlight is, is that the internal control review took place and we very much focused on working to support the AGS and see how that work could reflect and give yourselves assurance that, you know, we do meet those requirements. Are there any questions, please? Then in that case, I'd like to propose that the council approves the annual governance statement as set out in your papers. Can I have a second for that, please? Oh, crikey, I've got three. Councillor Harvey was actually first with his hand up there. All those in favour, please? Any against? No, there wasn't any against at all. Thank you. That's unanimous. So on to seventy-five twenty-two and, and thank you to the members of the public for, for bearing with us. And we're on to that one now. So bring you to the use of the area outside the Red Lion Public House. I'm going to stop talking and hand over to councillor Wright.
Could I just ask, members of the public, have you got this?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, madam mayor. I was asked to attend a meeting with Ten Clark and the venues manager and WeatherSpoons Friday before last to discuss the possibility of utilising the area outside the Red Lion for outdoor seating. The WeatherSpoons team had obviously used that during the Covid lockdown as an outdoor seating area and would wish to utilise it again and put it on a more formal basis. They weren't in a position to put forward anything in a long term vision at this stage because obviously wouldn't invest time, money, equipment into something that may not happen. So the tentative proposals were to have a twelve month licence during which time we would see if it worked, but we also allow them to find wise or put together more formal plans with something that would be more be fitting rather than except the existing picnic tables which we had last time. So obviously the area that they are looking at is the, the red square that you see there. We have had representation from the market stall holders. I've had a couple of concerned residents talking about it. And I think what we're really looking for tonight is the idea of in principle, are we willing to enter negotiations with WeatherSpoons to have that area? In the same way, we would look to if the British Legion wanted to use the outside area or the sweet shop might use their outside area, or if we had no cafe in shambles, that you would look to, yes, in principle, we do want to have that used as an outdoor seating area. And then if that was the case, then it would be really up to the officers to talk to the, the various users, the distinct users, the market stall holders, WeatherSpoons themselves, what requirements do they need? Because if they've got a dray lorry coming along, they may have to have that clearance there. I think the concern about having everything right up to the front door is something that we, in reality, would, wouldn't have because people coming out of the front door would have to have a splay area to come out from fire exit issue. But also there needs to be a thoroughfare of people going through there as a desire line. You wouldn't want it all, tables and chairs are rebundling through there. You would want to have a, an access route going through there. So I think some of the concerns that the market stall holders have need to be talked through with the officers to see what we can do. It may be that a clip, you know, clear way is, is maintained whilst they're setting up and the, the seating area away from the building is the permanent thing. And then those seats are brought into play once everything's set up or maybe not used until the market stall has gone. But, you know, these are things that we need to talk about, the nuts and bolts and the logistics of operations, which I think that the officers need to do that. In terms of the finances side, again, we've got our own expert in terms of we use them to adjudicate our rental properties and whether it be at a market stall rate or whether a, another rate, that would have to be looked at as a market rate and, and to talk through. So I think what we're really looking at is an in principle decision. Are we happy to enter negotiations with the WeatherSpoons to, to get that there? So give it away.
Just to say, we're listening to our market traders and reading emails that came in earlier. I think we have an opportunity to create conditions within that licence. And as you rightly said, I think that one of them could be that on market days, that nothing's allowed to go out until the market's cleared. I mean, there's absolutely no reason why we couldn't put that as a condition. You know, we can, we can do that. The stuff is temporary because it has to be moved. Because one of the things we did say at the meeting was, we've got things like remembrance. There's absolutely no way they can have tables and chairs outside for remembrance. So there would be conditions or there would have to be conditions if we, it was agreed by council that on, on an event such as remembrance, that there couldn't be anything on the marketplace because that just wouldn't be acceptable. I mean, when we were talking amongst ourselves, my, my, my thing is, is I think that several of the people in the shambles, I know the sweet shop and the baby, baby world, they'd like to be able to extend a little bit further outside and have some more, more space. So perhaps it's presented an opportunity for us to have a look at that in general and whether council would be happy for, you know, depending what you decide today, if you decide to go for it with conditions, that perhaps we could approach our other tenants and, and see if there's anything that they're interested in doing. You know, in fairness.
Councillor Cannon, please.
I would accept in principle. The only part I don't like is, as you're coming across from the post office, you're just used to walking through that there. I don't think that part should ever be blocked off. I think we need that way for push chairs or whatever else. Because you see them now, they will, most traffic comes through that way. And I, I don't think we'd, we'll block that up. But other than that, I think what Stuart has put forward is a good idea. You still, you talk to the stall holders, you talk to WeatherSpoons and you come up with the conditions and set them down. Thank you.
Councillor Harvey, please.
I really don't like the idea of having that red bit blocked off across the entrance. I think that's a known, that's a safety issue for starters. I'm really concerned with that, you know, the market holders and their, and their worries. If on market days, they can't be there, that's a possibility. If on events, they can't be there, and it's like soapbox challenge and all this kind of stuff, they cannot be there. But I must admit, I'm not a big fan of them having drinking on the market. I'm not a sport, but I just, that's right, it's the public, please.
Would anybody else like to speak on this matter, please? Councillor Jeremy, please. Sorry, I did have you.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions, but I think we probably did a bit too early. But just to ask them now and even factor them in. And the first was about consultation and I think that's been answered, possibly a bit early for consultation. But, you know, I'm quite keen, keen that we.
bit early for consultation, but, you know, I'm quite keen that we consult as many people as we can, particularly market traders and other retails within that facility, not just our own tenants in the shambles, but other, you know, people in the vicinity, because they're going to have to look at it, and it's their customers that are going to be affected as well, whoever. And you mentioned the point about rent. I've been here long enough, that I was here when Weatherspoons moved in, and the rent they pay for the Red Lion was based on there being no beer garden, and I think if we are effectively going to change that, then that has got to be taken into consideration, because, you know, they're paying a rate for something, if that changes, then they're going to be paying, you know, related to that. And then the other point was about rates, business rates, because we pay rates in relation to the market square, so presumably whatever portion they take up, and will be, you know, they'll be liable for. I was against the pedestrianisation of the market square, and actually, I think it's really disappointing that the first major change, if you like, is going to effectively be, it seems, Weatherspoons being allowed to expand onto the market square for drinking and the rest of it. And personally, I'm against the principle, I'll vote against this, and I think it's really disappointing that that's the first thing the public will see, that we're doing different in that place.
Thank you councillor Jeremy. Councillor Darling, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When looking at the area that extends across the whole front of the Red Lion building and its depth, it can accommodate, it just looks like sixteen times four-person tables, that includes the whole of the garden stall, part of the fruit and veg stall, and part of the closing pitch. And it also encroaches on the Thetford sign, the cycle parking area, a flower tub, and a large tree, all of which are not shown on the plan submitted with the request. And I'm also concerned about the present vehicle exit from the market square, which would be completely obstructed, and that area is used by stall holders for loading and unloading purposes, and I think the other entrance is more difficult for them to, you know, negotiate really, so that would be my concern, so I think the whole area is too big.
Councillor Tullott, please.
Must admit, I mean, during the Covid, it was nice to see people outside, but I've got my reservations, because we've opened up the marketplace to encourage people to use it, and I think maybe if you've got tables and chairs there, Weatherspoons overspill onto the market, it might put people off sitting around the market in the summer. I mean, we only just put our planters out, and it should be used for everyone to use, and they mustn't, you know, they mustn't feel that they don't want to go to the marketplace, because it's an extension of a public house. If it does go ahead, I really have worries about that entrance being blocked, and it should be further back, but I'd like to see what happens in the consultation. I mean, I think it'd be ideal for evening times, but during the day, I think to encourage families to use the marketplace, it is my priority, and the marketplace should always have the priority.
Councillor Baretto, please.
I reflect the feelings on this one, as most of my colleagues. I'm not comfortable with allowing Weatherspoons to expand, certainly not to this extent. I mean, if this is the actual square, like some of you were saying, that is a lot, that is a big area, proportion of where they're taking over. And for the sake of consistency, we had this conversation about, they had tried and made a request some time ago to expand into the more seating area to the outside. I think this has been dealt with before in some degree in the council. I think it was right after the Covid, the Covid time, where we had those temporary licences and allowed to expand, but if they wanted to continue to keep an outdoor area, and at that time, we decided that might not be appropriate, there was a temporary licence, it was a one-off situation, and eventually they would have to retract back to their original space. I think, if I remember well, my comment at the time was that, why should Weatherspoons just, because they're the bigger company? I'm just saying for the sake of comparison, is this because they're a bigger company with bigger buying power, or one of our biggest tenants, that they should be entitled to more space than the other tenants on the marketplace? Which I fully disagree, that's what you see, that all or none, they should all be entitled to ask a licence to expand in equal footing, in a pro ratio of their square footage, central to the size of the shops, or none at all, because then we prioritising and giving preferential treatment to the Weatherspoons versus, I don't know, the sugar shop, sweet shop, whatever they may be. The other thing, I sympathise with councillor Jeremy on this point, I wasn't necessarily in favour of potentially rights, the whole, making the whole thing blocked to traffic, so I was never quite in favour of blocking the whole thing. But once it is, let's just take that, now that we can't put cars in it, where does the emergency service come by if they're going to block a whole entrance, which, you know, it's been mentioned before, I mean, it's for safety issues, it really is not very practical. If you block a full entrance, then it's put tables and chairs, if you have an emergency that you need services coming in, you know, it's really hard for them to go all the way around, they're just coming through one opening on the other end of the marketplace. And lastly, I fully sympathise with the traders, they'll be there longer and they have the licence to operate in those areas, why should they have to move to prioritise a licence that comes after? We all go, keep thinking our praises about, let's try and make the marketplace more viable, bring more traders in. If you're taking away from this place, you're not only going to, you know, deter out the new ones who are coming in, you're probably going to start causing one curve once they are sitting there, to think that it's worse to put a tent in there and sell it. Anyways, this is my opinion, thank you.
Councillor Tullott, Clark, would you like to reiterate what you mentioned previously regarding one or all or none?
Yeah, I think with all things, the decisions we make set precedences. So what I was alluding to, is what councillor Baretto was saying, is that the decision we make on one actually is the precedence for all, and that's why we always have to be, you know, I have to be very boring and go, we're setting precedences. So, so yeah, I mean, but that's where, as councillor Jeremy said, consultation is good, because, you know, we don't know, if our other tenants want to do that, then we actually need to speak to all of our tenants, rather than just one tenant.
Councillor Hodgkinson, I'm really mindful that everybody else has had a crack at this one, and you haven't. Is there anything that you'd like to add to the discussions? Oh, sorry.
I'm two minds, really, because I think it would be great to see better use of the area. I think this is a massive area they're asking for, because when you look at it, it's almost exactly the same size as the main bit of the building, it's a huge area. And I agree with the points about not blocking the roadway through, although it's a pedestrian way now. But for me, I think it's a matter of timing, really, I don't think it's the right time for us, even if we thought this was a good idea, I don't think it's the right time for us to say yes, because I think we do need to talk to our other tenants. Also, if this was going to be a seating area just for families to have meals, it'd be one thing, if it's a seating area, everyone can go, it might get rowdy drinking, that changes the whole ambience of the area, so I think I'm verging on saying that I would vote against this.
Sorry, I meant to say, as the gentleman alluded to, we are actually putting in a bid for funding for the marketplace, for the heritage masterplan, and depending what council's come up with as to how they want to refurbish the marketplace and what they want that to look like, we wouldn't be able to give any permanent agreements anyway, because potentially if we get A, if we get the funding, then we would have to change that. And as of yet, we don't know what the marketplace is going to look like, so, or if we're going to get any money for it. So, you know, I think, because they are asking for temporary, aren't they, we wouldn't be in a position to give anything permanent anyway, I believe.
Councillor Brindle, please. Apologies for missing you off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's actually quite a complicated and difficult issue, and I'm not sure that we're really in a position to make a decision this evening. I kind of would feel happier if we perhaps appointed a working party or agreed to bring it up at a further meeting, where we've got time for further considerations. I'm basically in favour of allowing the traders, all the traders, on the market to have access if they wish to, but I think there are real complications, for example, particularly the issue of the access along the path that would effectively cut off their square from the building itself. We have to purely provide access for pedestrians. Can I make a suggestion, or can I propose that we do not make a decision this evening, but that we find some different way forward? Either that we have a working party, or that we postpone the decision for a month, so that we can take further stock of the situation. I don't think we should be rushed into a big request by Weatherspoons, of course, it may be a negotiation thing, and they may be happy to up off that size, but I really think that we are not ready to make a commitment this evening.
Councillor Baretto, please.
I was just trying to complement what was said regarding encourage more drinking and rowding us on the marketplace by extending the seating area within a provider of alcohol on a constant basis. I think it's a bit confusing, and it is, I just like a little bit of a lack of consistency in decisions in the council, and sometimes that bothers me a little bit, so I'm going to express my own feelings on this one. Some time ago, there was a request for a licence from a place close to Wally called the Sitcher Place, where they wrote a request a licence to operate and serve meals and food and et cetera. In the evening, it was mostly unanimous that they, people didn't want it, because there's already a protection order, we want to reduce the amount of people drinking, reduce the number of places that people can obtain alcohol, and that was a big issue, and there was a big conversation, you know, a fair discussion here about that at the time. Now, we're looking to, I mean, a request right in that centre in the marketplace, where they are also going to serve alcohol, and my question to the council is, so, do we want people more, more places serving more alcohol, encourage more drinking on the outside and centre of town? Now, we actually say no, unless, of course, they're called Weatherspoons. I don't have anything against Weatherspoons, actually, I have my breakfast, I enjoy it. So I have no issue with them whatsoever. I think it's about the way we give preference to some companies, or because of the place they were allocated, rather than others. So I don't agree that they should be able to expand, obviously, and if anything else, because others already have been told no. Bear in mind that the people that are at the Sitcher Place, then they eventually open because break them, then their final decision on the licence, and they said, yeah, there's no legal grounds not to allow you the licence, and they are operating. But the principle and the thought around the table was, another place I want alcohol, opening later, really is this what we want? And at that time, that was sort of out, not necessarily centralised in the middle of town, but we are not talking about a business that's going to be sitting dead centre in the middle of town, and how many more are going to add on to the number of alcohol-serving places? And, you know, if we look back on what you guys said, we're going to try to reduce that issue, it seems to me this will encourage that issue rather than reduce, but that's just me, thank you.
Thank you councillor Baretto. What I would say is, in relation to another place opening, it's an existing licence holder, and obviously, they would have to comply with the terms of their licence in order to do this, so it's not an additional outlet. And obviously, no decision has been made, because that is this discussion forum at the moment. Councillor Wright, please.
Yeah, and thank you, obviously, I hear what you said. In terms of the tenant, it seems, because it is Weatherspoons, it's our building, but, you know, that could have been any other person running that, and maybe wished to come forward, it just happens to be the proximity of the land there is why it's coming forward. So I think we need to draw a line under that, who it is, the Weatherspoons. But saying that, they do have appointed door staff ever since they've opened, and they are more or less running a good house there, you know, we've had instances where they're always going to get issues where they do need to manage, but they do have door staff on there, and managed it quite well, as I was saying. But obviously, you know, the issue about thoroughfare is something that I've been mindful of, and when people coming out those front doors, they're not going to be piling into tables, they do need to have a thoroughfare crew there, and I think that's something which we could put as a condition to do that. Somebody mentioned about the Green Leighton sign, and I've been by the thing, you know, those could be relocated, possibly up by the warmer world, as you've got a better view looking at the Guildhall, but that, you know, little bits, nuts and bolts, which I think, you know, are muddying the water tree. My feeling is that we've got, we need to do more work, we're beginning from the table here tonight, in that you would like to see a little bit more flesh on the bone, some more consultation, and coming forward with a more finely tuned proposal. And obviously, my councillor Brindle's made a proposal to go along those lines, and I'm happy to say we would go, come, get a working group together, we'll come to propose a proposal for the next meeting.
I get the sense that that is what this council would prefer. If I could just have a simple show of hands to say, can we go further with exploratory work, please? Those against going further with exploratory work? So the majority do have it on the going further with exploratory work. I mean, obviously, there are key considerations in terms of visibility from the high street, benefits to the overall market aesthetic, and the access points that have been raised by everybody, and obviously also the members of the public, Clark.
Could I clarify, are we going, did you want a working group? And if so, who would like to be a part of that, please?
Councillor Cannon, councillor Wright, councillor Brindle, councillor Baretto. Might I be bold? Might I suggest that we have a representative from some of our traders?
Yeah.
Sorry, and really, really mindful that you guys do early mornings and travel considerable distances.
So, when we set up a meeting, could we, would you be able to give up some time, the days that you're on the market, maybe? Would that make sense?
I'm going to do all my work on Saturday.
Okay.
Do you guys do something? That was one of my issues, we didn't have to get anybody to come along and say, this was my issue. I wonder about this, I don't know what we're going to do.
Possibly. Although, you know, sleep and eat, sleep and live the council, I'm not often on, I'm not in a workday. I'm sure that if you want input, then we can find something, maybe if you've got other things going on in the complex, we'll have officers in that, perhaps, can, we'll get a couple of councillors in to have a chat to you. Yeah, can I ask the other two? On a Tuesday? Would you be available if you set the meeting on a Tuesday? Oh. You make it hard to compromise, guys. Okay, well, we'll, let's have a chat, because I'm assuming you'll be here this weekend. Okay, let's see what we can come up with.
Councillor Jeremy, please.
I just found out what the clerk suggested there, because I think your suggestion, Madam Mayor, was for them to be part of the working group.
Yes, yes.
I think the clerk's alluding to is for them to be spoken to separately, which says to me, a part of the consultation. I think actually being part of the working group is a really bold move, and actually I would support that.
What I'm trying to do, councillor Jeremy, is find a way that I can perhaps find a date when there's an event on in there, so that perhaps...
As part of the working group, separate to...
Yeah, absolutely, but I'm thinking that maybe then there would be, councillors would be in the vicinity, if there's other events on in the complex, so that we can get people in.
So what we're saying really is, is very much, yeah, working groups are a Saturday, guys. But, yeah, actually, I think... Thank you so much for your commitment, and actually, thank you for your commitment to Thetford Market, because I know it's an integral piece of a lot of our residents' lives, and is very, very much appreciated, so thank you.
Okay, so we'll try and get some dates from you at the weekend.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent. Right, I think we've closed off that matter, is that okay, councillor Wright? Thank you. So we move on to seventy six twenty two, which is community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media releases required. Is there anything council would like to share with the world, please? I think really we're not at that point in terms of the marketplace yet, and hopefully something will come through from that working group. Councillor Jeremy, please.
Could I be bold, seeing as everybody is here, to say that the Thetford in Bloom competition is live at the moment? And I would encourage all councillors, if you see businesses, if you see residents that you think are suitable to be nominated, there are four different categories, so please, you know, as you're out on the balcony near your moors and your neighbours, it's only open until the end of... So please, you know, as you're out and about in your own mords and your own neighbours, it's only open until the end of June. So please do put your nominations in. Anybody can nominate, you can self-nominate, you can nominate your neighbours, you can nominate somebody you know. But, you know, the more that we nominate and recognise people's efforts for looking after our own and our others' ones, the more the better.
Thank you councillor Jeremy. And what I would say is, whilst I can't very well enter it, I have got red, white and blue pots outside of the shop. And hopefully I will inspire others to engage. Councillor Harvey, please.
Best wishes for the tragic loss of the fire in Dunlop, France.
Yes, we can put a post, yes, certainly.
I think it would be extremely appropriate for us to express our condolences.
I don't actually have any. If you've got some particular details that you could.
Just, you know, we are fortunate with the family and the victim concerned, yeah.
Anything else, please, team? In that case, we will move on to seventy seven twenty two, committee officers update to receive any update. Have you got anything?
The only thing I've got is, I did send an email out a couple of days later this afternoon, to say that they have agreed the election date for Budapest Award, which is Thursday, the fourteenth of July. So and the notice of election will go out on the, probably the eighth, but definitely by the ninth of June. And on the email, I did put links, if you've got anybody lined up, how you can get your election packs to get them all signed up to be Thetford councillors.
Anything else, please? Thank you. So the bit that I've been dreading all night, because I'll never get my teeth round it. So we move on to agenda item seventy eight twenty two, exclusion of press and public. And we are to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies' Commission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty, that the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Oh, yeah, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you councillors. So thank you very, very much, members of the public for joining us today. And I hope it's been beneficial.